All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mary?
Yes.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself as aye. All right, the motion is carried. We will begin with board reports. Mary, you're at the top of my screen. Go ahead.
Okay. I attended the MABE Conference Committee meeting. We had our wrap-up meeting. We discussed all the evaluation forms and we started plans for the two thousand and twenty-one Maryland Association of Boards of Education conference. And we're keeping in mind flexibility and resiliency. Thank you.
Nagina?
All right, so over the past few weeks, I've been working with the Leonardtown High School Student Government Association to not only make sure that we're still helping and engaging within our communities, both inside and outside of our school, but we're trying to put focus on creating, or like maintaining that sense of school spirit regardless of what format we're learning in. So, a couple of weeks ago, we held a sidewalk chalk decorating event where we went out before the freshmen came, just like a few of us, social distance, of course. And we drew pictures and just decorated the sidewalk to welcome the freshmen. So I'm very excited to work with the Student Government Association and come up with more creative ideas.
Kathy?
I attended another meeting of the MABE Legislative Committee. We discussed and voted on our our priorities for the coming year and John Boalms, who is the government liaison, briefed us on what he expects to see in terms of either bills that have already been filed or that he expects to have filed. I think the one that concerns me greatly, two actually that concern me greatly, what may happen with funding based on enrollment changes as a result of the pandemic and the impact that that will have on school system budgets across the state. But the other one is some of the larger counties have, from a number of different sources, have decided that they no longer want school resource officers and they want to have legislation to remove school resource officers in some fashion. They want to decouple it from the Safe to Learn Act. What that will look like, I'm not sure, but I continue to strongly advocate for the importance of school resource officers, but also to try to inform other board members of exactly the duties and responsibilities of school resource officers. And I've found pretty much across the board that it is not a well-understood concept. And so I hope that we will continue to be able to make the point of how important it is and how important it is to have a really strong memorandum of understanding with your local law enforcement authority. And I want to see us keep school resource officers. So that is, that is, will be an ongoing conversation for the next few months, I believe.
Okay, let's see. Monday night, I spoke with Cub Scout PAC four twenty, which is in the Leonardtown area, and it has a variety of students in fifth grade across various elementary schools, both public and private. And I guess we probably talked for almost forty, thirty to forty-five minutes. Each of the Cub Scouts had questions for me. It was part of one of their badges for, they had to interview a government official. So, and it ranged pretty much from what do you think about us ever going back to school? To what made you want to get into politics, to, you know, just random things. So, most impressed with that even though it was seven fifteen at night and after all of them had been on school for, you know, the majority of the day on Monday, they still had a lot of energy. I did thank them at the end because I, and I mentioned it to them that I think our students, and it kind of really came across to me during that Zoom call, I think our students are more resilient with all of the changes that are occurring in some instances than what the adults are. So, you know, they just kind of roll with the punches. And some of them were upset that they weren't in school that day. You know, some of them weren't planning to go back to school that day because, you know, they had signed up for virtual learning, but they were still trying to make the best of it. So, you know, it's, it was very heartening. Although I, a lot of them miss their friends, you know, they miss, you know, having recess and lunch and everything else. But it is, you know, they are, I think the kids are resilient as best as they can be with, you know, the changes and the pendulum swinging from one end to the other during the course of, you know, even seventy-two hours. So, I thanked them for inviting me. It was a lot of fun. So, and hopefully they will all earn their Cub Scout badges or whatever it was. So, I was a Girl Scout, not a Cub Scout, so I can't, I can't, I can't speak to that. So, all right, and with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
All right, let's do a little screen share. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Superintendent's update for November eighteenth. The elephant in the room, where we are right now, why we are in a pause. We find ourselves, we are now in our second week of a pause, and the pause will carry us through next week. Then we have Thanksgiving break and then the week after that until we understand better the data that's going on. Recognize that all the decisions that we make are predicated on the decision matrix and the data that was put forth from Governor Hogan, from the Maryland Department of Health, from the Maryland State Department of Education. They put forth COVID nineteen guidance for Maryland schools and they put a decision matrix chart. And the two pieces of data that we watch are the percent positive of all the people who are tested. Once it becomes over that five percent threshold, we need to start modifying and assessing what's going on. And the second is the case rate, which if it's greater than fifteen cases on average, a rolling seven-day average per one hundred thousand, we're supposed to have limited to no in-person programs. Why is that important? Because the entire state of Maryland, the entire state of Maryland, six million-plus people, we are at thirty cases per day, per one hundred thousand. That is double the measured mark for in-person instruction. We are above five percent positivity rate as calculated by the state, which includes duplicate testing and all those other things. We are in an alarming period. This is the highest that it has been since the pandemic, six months. St. Mary's County is better than the overall state, but using the state's data, we are twenty cases per one hundred thousand. This is as of yesterday, as of the seventeenth, and we are over five percent positive using their metrics, which includes duplicates and things like that. But as we said from the beginning, we use local data. We use the data that comes from the St. Mary's County Health Department because it is scrub data, it's specific data. It's data that we can talk about where, who, and how is testing positive. Every single day, we're working with the Health Department to understand the case rate and the positivity rate. So, as of yesterday, the positivity rate by their calculation was even higher because they removed the duplicate tests. Seven point nine percent, well beyond the threshold. Now, the new case rate that we calculated is seven point five. So it's actually lower than the state. So, either way, it's the highest that it has ever been. So we are, we have more cases per one hundred thousand than at the height of May. So, if we go to our chart, we're on the wrong side, pardon me, we're on the wrong side for both of those numbers, okay? And we have been for the last several days, and that is why we're not having in-person instruction. And we're going to watch the data every single day and we are hoping that we're going to see a trend reverse itself and go back down. But as long as we are outside the metric, the metrics set forth by the governor of the state, the Maryland Department of Health, the Maryland State Department of Education, we are going to follow their chart. I don't understand why we're not doing this for the entire state. I don't know why we are coming out and proclaiming that, but we are following the data, we're following the chart. Last week, we had more cases than we have ever had in one week, one hundred and forty-seven. And I can assure you, that number is going to be eclipsed this week. We have had multiple days where we've had twenty or thirty cases that are reported. If you want to see the data for yourself in real time, you want to play along at home, we have a COVID data dashboard that's available through our website. It's also been linked in the multiple letters that we've sent home to staff and to parents. It gives our county data, it gives the Maryland data dashboard, and it gives our specific data for the kids and the staff who are testing positive every single week, broken down by site location. So you can know exactly what's going on within the county.
Can I add one thing for that?
Sure.
So, for some of the questions and message boards and things like that from parents that were, I think, disheartened that the call off of school was, was as late as it was last week.
Right.
I just want everyone to understand that Dr. Smith and the team and Dr. Brewster use the latest data that's available. So, they are not going to make a call until they have the most finalized data that is, that is available. So, whether that comes in on Sunday at three PM or Saturday at six PM, that's what is being used. So, I, you know, I will apologize that it might not be, you know, what all of the parents and the students want on their timeframes, but they are working to make sure that they have the most up-to-date information available. So, the wrong call on whether to send students to school or to keep them home is not made. So, all right.
And, and if you-
I'm off my soapbox.
Right, and if you look, we were getting ready to have everybody come back because we were down very low. We were below five cases per one hundred thousand, and then we just had explosive exponential community spread, and it has continued for the last week and a half.
I will say that hospitalizations here are up also. They've, you know, granted, it's still thankfully a relatively small number, but the fact that it doubled in a week is, is of great concern because we're a small hospital and the availability of ICU beds could quickly become a significant issue.
And we see, and that's what we're seeing as well across the state. You know, the governor himself was, was talking about the fact that we've seen doubling of the patients in intensive care. So, this is our plan, and it is predicated on the community spread getting under control. It is predicated on the numbers not going up, but leveling off and going down so that we get within five percent positivity rate and like a single-digit case rate per one hundred thousand. If that happens over this week and into next week and Thanksgiving, then we are all set. The school is set up. We are ready on December seventh to bring back, to resume Phase Two. We'd only gotten through the first week of Phase Two before we saw these spiking numbers across the community. Not in our schools, but in the community. And the way that we kept it out of spiking in our schools is because we pressed pause. And I know that that was upsetting, and I know that people are frustrated, and I know people think that we're swinging things back and forth, but we have been methodical and we are using the same data to make the decisions, and we've communicated that over and over and over again. And, and I will tell you that I carry, I carry with me, I've been in this community for, you know, I've been in the school system for thirty years. I know a whole bunch of people, I know a whole bunch of parents, and they tell me the heartbreaking stories of how great it was even for those one or two fleeting days that they had within a classroom where they could see their teacher and the teacher could see them. And one of the best stories is a person who works here and who I've known for a very long time. Her, her child, her boy is a first grader, and on the first day, the incredible teacher said, hey, you know, we can't be sharing things, but you can bring in, bring in something that's really like a toy that you want to play with, your special toy. So when I see you in two days, bring in your special toy and we'll keep it here and it'll be all great and you'll be able to play with it. And so he went home and he picked out his brand-new, some of his brand-new most favorite matchboxes. So he brought in his brand-new most favorite matchboxes, and then we paused. So, the devastation of a six-year-old separated from his brand-new matchboxes, it's, you know, big and small. Recognize even those little, I will tell you that he has been reunited with his matchboxes because his teacher is amazing, because his principal is amazing, and because we're amazing. We've made sure that, that, and the young boy's name, Mom said I could share it, his name is Dash. And Dash is really, he's happy to have his cars back. So, we press pause based on data. If data gets better, we are ready to go. We are ready to bring those kids back and we have, we have, you know, again, one and a half million masks and tubs of hand sanitizer and floor stickers and routines and procedures. We're, we're ready to go. I will tell you that I am not optimistic.
I was just going to say, I know the governor has pleaded, and, you know, I think we all have to recognize that that our individual decisions about what we do for Thanksgiving
Right.
is going to have a significant impact
Right.
on the ability of our kids to be back in school on December seventh.
Yes.
Based on how long the incubation period is for this virus.
Absolutely, absolutely. So we're, so, Dr. Brewster and I speak often. Every single day, she tells me the preliminary numbers and then I get excited because they seem a little lower. And then she goes, no, sorry, sorry Scott, there's a whole batch that just came in. Testing is taking longer because more people are being tested. So, we have a plan. We're going to, we're going to monitor the data. We're going to communicate early. No matter what, parents, you'll know by December third whether or not Phase Two can come back in. We might know sooner than that. If, if we keep on seeing twenty or thirty cases a day, we're not going to have in-person instruction in December. And so we all need to be ready for that. We have to carry hope, but we have to be ready for that. And of course, then we go into this January. January, we're ready for, we're ready for Phase Three. We have all of the stuff put together. We're ready to go. It's just, community spread has to, we have to curb it. We have to get that, we have to, we have to bend that curve in the other direction so that we can come back to school. So, that's where we are. And why? Why do we need to get back in school? Why are we pushing for this? Why aren't we just saying, hey, we're going to be virtual till the end of the year? The results from the first marking period of virtual, and I don't think, I don't think our teachers could have worked any harder. I don't think our administrators and our support staff and our instructional supervisors and our transportation and our counselors and our food service, I don't think anybody could have worked any harder. And parents, I don't think our parents could have been more engaged and supportive and collaborative and all of this. I don't think, we did, we, we put forth maximum effort. And yet, when we get to the end of the first marking period and we compare our first marking period grades to our last marking period grades, we see that we have fewer As, fewer Bs, about the same with Cs, a bit fewer Ds, and then about five times as many Fs at middle school. So at middle school, we had almost six thousand Fs for the first marking period. And that means that, that of those four thousand kids, many got Fs. And for some of them, it's the first time they've ever failed a course ever under any circumstance, and parents are worried and kids are worried and the stress that creates. But there are six thousand Fs that we are going to address. Our teachers are incredible, our administrators and support staff, we're going to figure out so many different ways to address it, but there's six thousand Fs from the first marking period in middle school. In the high school, there are seven thousand Fs. And in the high school, every course is for credit. So if you don't pass, you don't earn credit. If you don't earn credit, you don't get promoted. If you don't get promoted, you don't graduate. We have a lot of work. We have a lot of work. And I just, that, that's, that's, that's why we keep pushing for some form of in-person instruction so we can make that connection, so the kids can see their teachers, so that the teachers can see the kids, so that we can all work together because, you know, we have thousands of Fs that we have to address because our kids need us to. So,
Can I add another thing on there?
Sure.
Can you go back to that time? So, as, I'm going to make my plug and I'm going to get back on my soapbox again, that is, we go into budget season, right? And everyone is sitting here talking about how, you know, the school systems are saving all this money because we don't have in-person instruction, we, you know, we don't have all these expenses. Whatever, whatever your argument may be, right? I would challenge every one of you to look at these two charts and determine whether or not you feel that this is only going to be an impact that is felt for the two thousand and twenty-one school year for these students, right? Because these are our citizens, their parents pay taxes, and they are entitled to the education that they deserve. Now, everyone is working, as Scott has said, tirelessly to ensure that that happens, but it is a completely different deliverable that we are providing to the students right now. And it's not because we've made that decision. That decision has been made elsewhere in, in the universe and the world that had, and this is a result of it.
Yeah.
So, before everyone starts jumping on the bandwagon about school budgets and what is, you know, what is and what shouldn't be, maybe not look at the money numbers and look at the data and how it is affecting the kids. Because if anyone wants to know, it's right there.
Yeah.
Affecting the kids and it will ultimately affect the community.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Hugely so.
Yeah. So, so with that data, we all, you know, we're all blue, you know, we are all, what are we going to do? Here's what we need everybody to hear, and this is the first part that we need everybody to hear, and that means everybody. So that means principals and teachers and all support staff and everybody who's involved in, in, in education and working with kids and parents and kids and the larger community and people in their eighties and people who, you know, everybody needs to hear. We're all struggling. Nobody is not struggling. Some people can put a great face on it and they look like ducks just skimming across the pond while their legs are furiously doing their due underneath. I'm kind of upside down so you just see my feet, you know? But we're all, we've all got stressors, and we've never been more stressed. We have, and we've never been more stressed. We are all disconnected and missing some of our social groups, and we all want to get back to our social groups. And many of us have. And then resources are, are, are going to, have been limited. They got back to somewhat, they're going to, they're going to be limited again as we push into this next thing. This is not normal. None of this is normal. Your normal expectations to what you, what we need to do don't fit. And, and kids, in particular, their, their mental health, their stress is, is incredible. So we need to breathe, we need to be kind, we need to be patient, we need to be flexible, we need to be forgiving. And I say that to everybody with whom I interact, so please forgive me. We need to be understanding. We have to balance expectations with the challenges that are before us. We have to make, instead of the goal a hundred percent on something, how about just being engaged? Like actually getting the kids to log on and turn on a camera, celebrate small achievements. That's, that's a huge, that's, that's a, that's a great achievement. You've broken down a barrier, you can, a kid can see you, you can see the kids. Because our kids are really struggling, and we can see that in the grades, we can see that in everything that we do. They're stressed, and the parents are stressed. Parents who've never, who have children who are shiny bright A star kids, you know, they're sending me text messages saying, you know, what are we supposed to do with this? And I'm like, we all have to do these things, and here it is. So we have to approach each day as a new day. We're going to have bad days, and then the sun's going to go down really early, and then it's going to come up. Each day is a new day. You got to be open and honest. You got to set realistic goals. You have to encourage just the engagement, because some of these kids, they failed. And you know what happens when a twelve-year-old gets an F? They shut down. They're not like, there's not, there's not really, there's not some pocket of great resiliency in a twelve-year-old that goes, I'm going to put to it, I'm going to, no, the majority of them, they're like, I don't care, I'm done, I'm shutting down. So you got to, it's, we got to encourage that engagement. We got to provide flexibility. This will work out. This, it will all work out. Empathy and understanding's got to rule the day. And parents, you got to reach out to teachers and staff. And teachers and staff, you got to keep doing exactly what you have been doing, which is, it's unbelievable. You've been supportive, you've, you've really been creative, you've been doing such a great job. Just don't, please don't, don't give up. Just keep doing it. Because our, our kids, our kids really need us, and this is a really important time. And so, while we are in this pause and we're not worried about like how kids are going to get off a bus and how they're going to walk down a hall or whatever, how about we take all of that energy and we, and we, and we check in on one another and we really try to make sure that we have some understanding of what's going on in kids' lives so we can support them. And parents, if your kids are failing, please don't, please don't, please don't put that on them. Because it's not, it might be a little bit their fault, right? Because everybody can do better. But so much of the stuff, they, is completely out of their control. So, we're all going to get through it. We're going to, we're going to, you know, it's, we're going to make MFDs, Mostly Fine Decisions. Some are going to be good and some are going to be better and some are going to be eh. And we have to get really accustomed to right now, this is, we're in an environment of good enough. And good enough means that we get to each, each day. Each day is a new day and kids log on and we keep moving forward. Because we're going to be, it's going to be a tough little slug through the next six weeks, I think. So with that, it is great that it is Educator Excellence and Education Appreciation Week. It's, it really is appropriate, and, and the online education, the excellence in online teaching, we're almost to a thousand. And they're from parents and students and colleagues in their elementary, middle, and high, and even some people even recognizing central office staff. Go figure, how great is that? I want to just read you a couple because they will right bubble you if you think that we're in this never-ending despair. Ms. Patton at Mechanicsville Elementary School, my son is autistic and he loves art. Online instruction is hard. Thankfully, his teacher, Ms. Patton, records the art set, the art lesson. She doesn't just record her lesson, she explains things to the viewer and is very engaging. The ability to pause the video if you need more time prevents a child from feeling stressed. And the confidence it gave my son is amazing. He was so pleased with himself, he was able to produce such a fantastic picture. I'm grateful for Ms. Patton for taking the time and making videos for the children. It not only helps the kids who are absent to know what they missed, but it also allows those that need a bit longer to do the project. I mean, oh my gosh, she, this, this mom is so dialed in to exactly the best things that are going on. Ms. Kaiser at Dinerd, when students returned to school virtually in August, I was very concerned about how my fourth grader would do. I've been pleasantly surprised with his progress and I owe it all to Ms. Kaiser. Ms. Kaiser does an excellent job keeping her students engaged in line. She's animated and funny. You should hear her game show voice. She takes the time to ensure her students understand expectations and are not falling behind. She understands that transition has been difficult for students and parents alike and assigns quality work while assuring that quantity is manageable. Ms. Kaiser makes herself available at any time there's a question. I'm very impressed with Ms. Kaiser and the whole fourth grade team alike. Wow, managing expectations and engagement and doing talk show voices. Tylita Butler, Ms. Butler is so enthusiastic about learning and I like that her expectations are so clear. I always know what we're doing and when it's due. Her assignments make learning fun while also helping me understand the content. She is encouraging and says encouraging things like, I want science to be your favorite subject by the end of the year. And if you haven't seen Ms. Butler, foof, she really, she's, they're great. Ms. Ashley Gallo, probably a familiar name to those who, Chautauqua royalty there. She's really gone above and beyond to try to help- She's really gone above and beyond to try to help, whoops. I'm trying to move you around here so I can see. She's really gone over and above to try to help students get the concepts. It's hard for our son who has an IEP, but she's always available for extra help. However, what really touches us is when she recorded the text on a quiz since our son does not, does better when it's read to him. Something she doesn't have to do, but did. You can really see that she wants to help students be successful no matter what level they are at. She has taken a tough situation and adjusted well to help along the way. And if you know her, that, boy, that's a, that's, that's what she does. And then finally, Cody Hans, also at Chopticon. He recognized, recognizes that this is not a time to add challenges to learning, but prioritizing helping the students be successful. He's recognized that there is a level of adaptation that needs to be accounted for and has made sure that the failure to adapt quickly enough is not what the students are primarily judged upon. The impact of his experience on high school students has the potential to define their next level of education and consequently their adult future. Because of that, I believe he stands as an example to other teachers. Parents, can you just keep them coming? Because this is, for me, this is inspirational. For everything that's not right, this is absolutely right. And our teachers are doing exactly what we could have, more than we could have ever asked. And so the last.
It's a poem.
Is a poem. It's a, it's a well-known poem, right? Everybody knows "A Road Not Taken." But that's where we are. "Two roads diverged in a yellow wood and sorry, I could not travel both and be one traveler. Long I stood and looked down one as far as I could to where it bent in the undergrowth. Then took the other just as fair and having perhaps the better claim because it was grassy and wanted wear, though as not, as for the passing there, had worn them really about the same. And both that morning equally lay in leaves, no step had trodden black. Oh, I kept the first for another day. Yet knowing how one, how way leads on to way, I doubted if I should ever come back. I shall be telling this with a sigh, some were ages and ages hence. Two roads diverged in a yellow wood, in a wood, and I, I took the one less traveled by. And that has made all the difference." And that's, that's where we are. You know, we are, every single day, we are presented with this or that. And I couldn't be more proud of the way all of your staff, all of your teachers, all of your people working for your kids are choosing the that. They are not traveling the easy way. They are doing more than one could ever expect. And so it's most appropriate that we have educator that we're recognizing. It's American Education Week because we have so many people that are deserving of some attention and love and praise. And so with that, I conclude my remarks.
Roll right in, okay? And we can roll right into Dr. Mar.
So if Dr. Mar is on, there's Dr. Mar!
With American Education Week.
Well, hello, good evening, everyone. It is my honor and my privilege to share our appreciation for those who work with our students every day. For nearly 100 years across the nation, schools have celebrated American Education Week. The first of these recognitions was in 1921, led by efforts of the National Education Association, the NEA, and American Legion as a way to emphasize the importance of education following World War I. Today, we emphasize that same purpose while also showing our sincere gratitude for those who serve in our classrooms and our schools. November 16 through 20, 2020, has been designated as American Education Week. This week, we also celebrate Education Support Professionals Day, recognizing the incredible efforts and, um, collective efforts of all of our support staff. Across our system, amazing professionals worked tirelessly for our students, doing what seems the impossible during these trying times. You just heard excellent examples of the caring and thoughtful approach of our teachers and we are grateful for our amazing staff in our schools, across our offices, in our hallways and lunchrooms and across our system. As we begin, I'd like to take a moment to share a video that we have created that illustrates our appreciation. Dr. Smith?
All right, let's see how I do here. Stop. There we go, we're back.
All right, well, I want to thank Ms. Mary Ann Williams from the Office of Strategic Planning and Communications for creating that wonderful video. I'm glad we were able to watch it without the glitches, so thank you, Mary Ann. Well, this evening, as we recognize our incredible educators across the system, we've invited some of our system-wide award winners from the 2019-2020 school year whose pictures are on display here in the Board of Education meeting room to be part of tonight's recognition. Ms. Denise Brown Taylor, that's a teacher at Spring Ridge Middle School, was our SMCPS Maryland Teacher of the Year. You'll hear from her in a moment. Dr. Jake Hybel, Principal of Great Mills High School, was the SMCPS Washington Post Principal of the Year. And we have others who were not able to join us this evening, but I want to recognize them. Mr. Charles Herbert, Building Service Worker, who last year, when selected, was at Lennertown Middle School, now at Great Mills High School, was our Education Support Professional of the Year. And Mr. Kevin Wright, Supervisor of Instruction for Social Studies, was our Leader of Excellence. As well, we want to recognize and appreciate Dr. Alma Sharon, who was our Washington Post Teacher of the Year, who retired last, at the end of last year. In addition, we want to celebrate our staff, celebrating our staff with us are our partners from the Education Association, Ms. Sarah Penrod, President of ESMIC, and Alex Jaffers, President of SMASA. In a moment, I'd like to invite our award recipients to share some words. And before I turn it over to Dr. Smith, on behalf of St. Mary's County Public Schools, we also want to express our gratitude to our amazing staff who continue each day to do what I said before was, seems like the impossible. Dedication, their adaptability and their commitment are to be commended. Over the last six weeks, we sought nominations from our community, from parents, students and staff. Nearly 1,000 nominations for excellence in online teaching have been submitted. In fact, I just checked and I think we're 11 shy. So I think by the end of the week, we'll cap that. And as we celebrate American Education Week, these nominations are a testament to the commitment of our teachers, our support staff and our leaders. We thank you all. And Dr. Smith, before recognizing our staff to share their words, would you care to read the proclamation?
Yes, I will and we have a lovely resolution and it's signed by the whole board. Whereas, the week of November 16 through the 20th of 2020 has been designated as American Education Week by the National Educational Association in effort to celebrate public education and honor the individuals who make a difference and ensure that every child receives a quality education. And whereas, education is a pillar of democracy and a cornerstone of American opportunity that gives our children the foundation they need to understand and appreciate our nation's values of freedom, civility and equality. And whereas, public schools bring together adults and children, teachers and volunteers, businesses, civic leaders and elected officials who all have a stake in public education and play an important role in inspiring children to learn inside and outside of the classroom. And whereas, public schools provide our children with outstanding opportunities in academics, athletics, fine arts, vocational training and extracurricular activities to equip them with the skills and knowledge needed to grow, thrive and succeed in our global society. And whereas, all education employees, including teachers, principals, assistant principals, administrators, counselors, paraeducators, building service workers, cafeteria workers, office personnel and other support personnel deserve our gratitude, respect and support for their professionalism and commitment to our schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes November 16 through the 20th of 2020 as American Education Week and November 18th, 2020 as Education Support Professionals Day in St. Mary's County Public Schools and encourages all citizens to join across the United States in showing support for public education and expressing appreciation to school personnel and celebrating the education that our children receive from public schools. Signed this 18th day of November by all of the board members. And so with that, I would like to turn it back to Dr. Mar, so perhaps we could hear from Ms. Brown.
Yes, I, first, I, I'm going to ask that Ms. Brown Taylor and Dr. Hybel turn on their microphones and cameras and then we'd like to hear from them. And we are also joined, I want to add too, by Wendy Zimmerman, who is Ms. BT's proud principal. So Ms. BT is our, our, our Maryland Teacher of the Year for the 2019-2020 school year. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Mar. Presidents and members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Smith, other designated personnel, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you this week. We recognize this American Education Week. On behalf of the amazingly wonderful teachers of St. Mary's County Public Schools, I am so proud to represent each and every one of us, erudite salaries, cornerstones and pillars of our community. In preparation for today's presentation, I had moments of uncertainty. What do I say about this passionate and purposeful group of professionals? I decided to take a toll, asking my brilliant colleagues why they became teachers. I only had a small sample of colleagues, as most are teleworking. Thank you, Dr. Smith. The poll revealed that we became teachers because we wanted to make a difference, to effect positive change, to inspire, to instill, to engage students in real-world experiences, to mold great minds, to become role models, to be the gift that keeps on giving and to teach the whole child. There is a famous quote that says, "Give a man a fish and you feed him for a day, teach him to fish and he'll eat for a lifetime." And although we're not teaching our students to fish, at least not virtually, we are sharing and teaching them the value of an education, building relationships, communities and acceptance. We are modeling for them humanity. We miss our students. We miss the connections, we miss the banter, the laughter, but we are innovators. St. Mary's, St. Mary's County Public School teachers are resilient and we genuinely care about our students and each other. We know we cannot have in-person school at this time, but rest assured that we're doing our best to deliver exceptional lessons via the virtual platform. We have learned from the great teachers of yesteryear when they decided to embark on a journey teaching in public schools. Today, those are the shoulders we stand on as we navigate these new experiences. Again, thank you for this opportunity to celebrate the heroes of public school education, our teachers in St. Mary's County Public Schools. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. BT, you represent your colleagues very well and we really appreciate your, your words this evening. Dr. Hybel?
As an award winner, I would like to not have to go after Ms. Brown Taylor ever again, please. Wow, that was, that was wonderful. I'll keep mine very short and brief and I'll pull from my coaching reference. We're all about a team. Any award like this is, is bigger than one person, no one person bigger than a team. So in my case, I, I appreciate the recognition, but the truth of the matter is, it's a team effort. And at Great Mills, it's a team effort, starting with my wonderful staff and my administrative team who, who is so dedicated to each other and to our students in meeting our challenges. We've been, as we all know, we've been through a lot these past few years. And I'm just continuing to be amazed with their dedication and their resiliency, their ability to go above and beyond for our kids in a difficult time. And, and we know that these, these, that past few months have been very difficult and very trying. But because of the quality individuals I know that I'm, I'm fortunate enough to work with, I know that we'll come out of this on top. So I, I, my message is, it's a team effort. I appreciate the recognition, but really I'm just humbled and honored to work with such quality people, not just at Great Mills, through the school system. We have a lot to be proud of and I'm very appreciative, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hybel, and thank you for what you do every day in supporting your students and staff and your entire community each day. And now, we're also joined with Ms. Penrod, who is the President of the Education Association. Sarah, I, I don't know if you have a few words that you'd like to share on behalf of ESMIC for, for American Education Week?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mar. Of course, there just isn't enough time to, you know, shower upon them all the accolades they deserve. I'm just honored to be able to be here to congratulate two fabulous members, Charles and Nina, for being the excellent leaders in the field that you are. You are both role models to your colleagues and all future SMCPS team members. We're so lucky to have these, such dedicated educators on our team and ESMIC is definitely proud to count you both as members. So congratulations on this achievement. And of course, while I'm here, to all educators, teachers, counselors, school psychologists, secretaries, building service workers, food service workers, nurses and bus drivers, administrators and hopefully I didn't forget anybody. Everybody who has sacrificed their sanity, risked their health and safety and worked harder than ever before to deliver the best education to our students that we could possibly offer during this time, a huge thank you. So once again, congratulations, Ms. Brown Taylor, for your achievement. And I know, I hope Charles is somewhere watching this as well. Congratulations to you and thank you again.
Thank you very much, Sarah, and thank you for your support of teachers and support staff in ESMIC throughout the year. Well, Dr. Smith, that concludes the recognition. I don't know if you had any additional comments or remarks, but thank you all for, for allowing me to, to spend some time appreciate, expressing our system-wide appreciation for all of our staff.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's little, there's little to add after that. That's wonderful. All right, wonderful, thank you.
Let's see, we have no public hearing. Peg, did we have any public comment? Okay. Then may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes for November 4th of 2020. There are no administrative and supervisory personnel hires. There is personnel, teacher hires. And so I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, let's see, roll call vote, Mary? Okay, Jim?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye, the motion is passed. All right, first up on our action item is Mr. Steve Witten with Snow Removal Services. Because I guess we will get snow on top of everything else.
We'll see.
Oh, I hope, I hope we have piles and piles of snow.
Oh, nothing of them.
All right, Mr. Witten?
Good evening, I'm here to talk about snow removal services. It was four, five years ago this month that I was before you last for these services. This contract being structured the same way, it is a one-year contract with Portland Mills. So I'm here this evening to request the board's approval to award contract ITBS SMCPS 2021 MSR as to Bowles Enterprises and Jay Brown Excavating for Snow Removal Services. Department of Ma, uh, Maintenance manages the snow removal and ice melt application for all schools and office parking lots. We also manage the removal of snow from sidewalks when the accumulation is greater or equal to three inches. When it's below that number, the building service workers typically take care of it at the school, at each individual school. Each year, snow removal calls are affected by a number of things. Number of snow events, amount of accumulation, and the amount of ice created in the days before and the days after the event takes place. A little bit about the contract information. This is ITB, who conducts a seal bids for experienced and qualified contractors who perform snow removal services, specifically to pile on ice, entry roads, parking lots, to clear sidewalks, coveled slopes and office buildings as needed. specifically to pile on ice, entry roads, parking lots, to clear sidewalks, coveled schools, and office buildings. Qualifications where they have to be available twenty-four hours a day from November fifteenth through April thirtieth of each year, and able to respond within two hours of having an emergency call from SMCPS. They need to meet or exceed the minimum equipment threshold, inventory threshold, and meet or exceed the minimum experience level of five years. The contract basically separates the counties into two areas, Area One and Area Two for snow removal purposes. Area One, as you can see on the slide on the left, and Area Two is on the right. These areas are balanced, and basically, north and south, there was some changes. There was one movement from Area One to Area Two, which was Oakville Elementary School. We're always trying to balance out the workload between the two contractors, which actually translates to our quality assurance inside our shop. We monitor the work as it proceeds. Some historical perspective, the last large snow within the past couple of years, as you can see, was M minus sixteen, which was actually in calendar year fifteen, if I recall. That year, we weren't only removing it from sidewalks and parking lots, we were literally removing it from some of the roofs of some of our schools. The procurement method, again, was an ITB, was issued on October fourteenth and posted on email on Marketplace and SMCPS Purchasing Office Bid Board in accordance with the annotated code of Maryland, Article five dash one one two in the Board Policy and Regulation DJC of DJCR. The Saint Mary's County Public School Purchasing Office requested sealed bids from experienced and qualified contractors to perform snow removal services. On October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, resealed bids were received and opened. Bowles Enterprises of Loveville, Maryland, and Jay Brown Excavating of Leonardtown, Maryland were the lowest bidders for Areas One and Two respectively, and fully met the requirements of the solicitation. With that, we recommend, our recommendations, the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
All right, questions? Mary, you're at the top.
No questions, thank you.
Nagina?
No questions, thank you.
Jim?
Mr. Witten, is there, is there a possibility of teaming up with a county, snow removal, to take advantage economies of scale, or is that just not in the jurisdiction?
I have not looked at that directly. I can't tell you that contractors work for the state, the county, and the school system. Our previous contractors and the current contractors were getting ready to award. Our contract was mimicked off of a state and adapted to a county contract. But no, we have not explored going in together. I can, if that's what the board would like.
It would just seem to me that, as I mentioned, it's possible that, you know, if you combine forces, mobilization costs, et cetera, it might, it might be cheaper if, at times, you could team up with the county. So I'd appreciate if you could look into it and get back to me, get back to the board.
All right. Jim, do you have anything else?
That's it.
All right. Kathy?
Mr. Witten, would it be a problem teaming with the county in that the contractors who, as you indicated, work for the state, the county, and the school system, that they can't start for the county until the state releases them? They can't start for us until the county releases them after they have... So we're sort of last on the list in terms of, of when our schools are plowed as compared to the state and then county roads. Is that accurate?
Very accurate during a very large event. That is completely accurate. During a light event, typically, the contractors will have enough equipment to where they can break away some of their, from the state or the county. And it depends on the actions that the county and the state take. We have had years where the state takes a very aggressive pre-treatment approach, and the county takes the same approach on the main roads, but takes a very, they wait till it's snowed to the sidewalk. In those cases, again, the contractors are able to be released to us sooner. Economies of scale, I could research that very quickly. What I, what I could not answer the board on very quickly is, is what kind of level of control would we retain in specificity for some of our requests? That would be my largest concern.
Right.
Sometimes we, sometimes we do make a decision to close school before we started moving a ton of snow, but we still need support in-house and through some of these contractors to clear paths so we can make sure the heat is running. If we have a boiler in this town, we still need to cut paths for our service truck. So there's, there's a lot of facets to contracting type of services. I'm sure economies of scale would, I would definitely have to look at our ongoing control of how we could flex our contractors.
It might be interesting to see if we could piggyback on their contract if, if indeed, they got a better price than we did. But, you know, that, that might be perhaps the, a different approach to take. With respect to the bids that came in, there was a pretty big disparity in those bids. And, and I know that, that the company, Jay Brown Excavating, have they done work for us as an entity before?
Not, not as James Brown Excavating. James Brown Excavating is subcontract to do snow removal for both dirtworks and bowls over the years.
So in that instance, will, will that company have the equipment? I mean, I know you said that they met the specifications. If they've done work for Bowles as a subcontractor, is that going to impact Bowles' ability to, to provide services?
According to their submission of experience, it appeared, I hate to get into gross detail, but it appeared they did more work for dirtworks than they did for...
For bowls? Okay. All right.
Indirectly, indirectly, they have provided services to us. My foreman and myself have actually worked with Mr. Brown directly in the field when it's a little thing got missed, or we have a concern that we need to use our forces to that during snow.
Well, I guess, and, you know, the sore, sore subject would be that there may not be any more snow days since we have one-to-one computing, and so this, you know, between climate change and one-to-one computing, it may become a moot point. So we will see what we will see.
Global warming and a pandemic, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, pretty much. You gotta find the silver lining, you know?
Not for the kids, though. When are they gonna go sled riding? So I just, I had a couple red flags on this, on the bid, Mr. Witten. Number one, the, I mean, regardless, the prices for Jay Brown were so much lower than what the other ones. And now that if you're telling me that he was a subcontractor for the other two, then, okay, but then, he also, when he bid, there's a disparity between his hourly rates between Area One and Area Two. So I guess that, I mean, if he's just chasing the contract, okay. But then, I think to Mrs. Allen's semi-point is that, does he have the experience to run the whole job by himself if he's only been subcontracting and doing piecemeal work for us over the past, I guess, five years? So, I mean, it's a lot different if I get a call and say, hey, go clean Park Hall versus, hey, go clean these fifteen schools and get it done in twenty-four hours. And I guess, plus then, in the narrative initially rolling up, you know, he didn't qualify to do the entire, you know, he didn't have enough equipment to do everything. So, I don't know, it just, it, it just raised a couple red flags to me when I was looking at the individual bid tab.
I don't know if it helps, maybe help answer part of your question. Our intent is always to award to at least two contractors.
In the event that...
Right. I completely understand that. So, but I mean, with, with the, with the sentence in there that, you know, if, if he didn't, I mean, I guess, and maybe it was a justification as to why he was awarded Area Two rather than Area One, right? Between that, but then, you know, his, I just, his hourly rates between the two are, are different, so...
The savings by, the savings by awarding Area Two to the school system double than if we, than if we awarded to Jay Brown Area One.
Right, because he bid lower on an hourly rate on Area Two than what he did on Area One. Right. So that's, I mean, do you typically, first of all, I guess, do you typically see that you have one contractor bid for both areas? Or did he bid for both areas and put in different prices with the hopes of obtaining one of the two areas with a low bid?
Yes. I can tell you that the last time we, we put this contract for out for solicitation, three contractors bid, and all their prices were exactly the same. I believe they're bidding what they get paid reimbursed by the state and the county. And we ended up having to, we ended up, in that year, we ended up talking, I believe Bowles was awarded, and the contractor that wasn't awarded ended up becoming a subcontractor for Bowles.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get to is, is, I understand, I can answer for the price disparity. That's how that individual contractor chooses to do business and measures his risk. I can't tell you there's a limited amount of people countywide, whether they work with the state alone or the county, that have the sort of equipment to be able to respond to the amount of acreage we have.
Right. And I guess, I guess, my, my only question is, is that I know, I know, and it's exactly as Kathy said, everyone starts subcontracting for the state, then you immediately move to the county, then you move to the school system. So, you know, I mean, you have crews that are literally working, you know, days straight. So if you can tell me with your utmost confidence within working with Jay Brown Excavating, or whoever they are, in a subcontracting role, that they can then handle it from a...
As a primary contractor.
Primary contractor for everything, then, okay. But, you know, if I just, I'm a numbers person, I'm not the touchy-feely person, and I don't have a relationship with any of the snow contractors, you know, that I've talked to them about anything. So to me, it's just, it, it's, it's an oddly structured bid on their part, so...
I will tell you, we're, we're dancing around twenty thousand dollars on a snow event that may or may not happen with a contractor that's known to us, that, you know, you know, yeah.
So if Mr. Witten, if they vetted him, and if they're good with it, then, then that's what I need to hear.
What, I guess what I can say is that I've worked with all three contractors, dirtworks, Jay Brown, Bowles, and the multitude of contractors that have been great sometimes to meet our demand of trying to open up the next day or the day after.
Okay.
And, yeah, they're tired, but they don't stop working until they hear from us that a decision has been made not to open schools or go two hours late the next day. And then people that, they're tired, they will lay off, or they'll give the guys three, four hours to take a nap and take a break. They, they never failed, they never failed SMCPS, to my knowledge, to the point where we couldn't open up schools.
Okay.
Because of something they couldn't accomplish.
Okay.
We've had county roads, not blaming the county, we've had county roads delay schools. We've had unexpected freezing rain. I've never seen contractors fail us in that way, whether they were the direct contractor, the lead contractor, the general contractor, if you want to term it that way, or a sub.
Okay.
Has the amount of equipment. I've seen him operate. He's helped clean up some of our larger parking lots at Leonardtown High and the Forest Center. He's worked Chopticon, he's worked Margaret Brent, he's worked Spring Ridge. I don't have that sort of fear. With any contractor, with any technician, if you put an unreasonable expectation on them, they will fail, but they're gonna go down hard. They're gonna go down letting you know that they tried.
Right, okay. Well, at this point, you're gonna have to find boat rentals to get the kids to school, to get them through Leonardtown with the amount of flooding.
Yeah, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be snow.
So without it's not gonna be snow, it's gonna be, it's gonna be boats.
Right.
Bridge construction.
Yes.
Or kayak, I don't know, something. If, if it continues to rain and flood, I guess there is a blessing that we have in Marshall. Right. So, okay. All right, with that, I have a motion for this action item.
I move that the Board of Education approve award of contract ITB SMCPS twenty twenty-one MSRS to Bowles Enterprises and Jay Brown Excavating for snow removal services on an as-needed basis and as funding permits throughout the duration of the contract.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All right, roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right. Thank you, Mr. Witten. I know it was probably painful, so... All right, let's see. Exterior window and door replacement at White Marsh Elementary School.
All right, come on. This isn't as easy as it looks. All right, Ms. Liana?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here today to request approval to award a contract in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, six hundred, thirty-five dollars to Wheeler Goodman Basic, W O G M, to provide the professional architectural engineering, also known as AE consulting services, for the replacement of exterior windows and doors at White Marsh Elementary School. We are here in coordination with the Department of Design, Safety and Security, managing the selection, coordination of the projects for several other projects, but in this case, is for the replacement of the windows and doors. Last year, we did a study, a window study, and we determined four schools that required window replacement. And one of the schools is White Marsh. And the reason why we determined that they needed some replacement is that there is a presence of asbestos-containing materials. And we, in order to install the security film and to raise the level of security against forced entry, this replacement of the windows needed to occur. So after the window study was done, we analyzed options, either what was better for the school and the money in the most optimal way. And there were two options. One was replacing the glazing, and the other one was replacing the totality of the windows. We went with the option two of replacing the totality of the windows, and now we are in the need of hiring an architect to design what windows are we gonna install in this school specifically. The selection for this architect was based on the performance, the skill and experience in designing. For us, not only a variety of projects, but they were involved in many of our security vestibles that we did back in two thousand and ten when we did the ARNISO, or the first phase of security vestibles was implemented. And W O G M not only is working for us currently for the modernization for Mechanicsville, but is also designing Diner Elementary School, H VAC, and... but is also designing Diner Elementary School H V C and roof replacement. And, um, as a prime architectural firm, um, W O G M will provide on the background documentation with existing conditions of the survey, provide coordination, overall project management, and serving as the prime role in the really construction administration of this project. We are estimating that this project, uh, it's in the four hundred thousand dollars, uh, this is, uh, exploration with the cost estimate of doing this, uh, window study. Um, and as a procurement, we follow the F E B policy for projects with construction budget under two million, where our prequalification process is based, uh, on the ability, is a technical base, and is based on the abilities of the professionals, and the selection is based on the expertise, the capabilities, capacities, and the fee that is provided. Um, we have a, a handful of architects, uh, prequalified, and, um, W O G M was, um, selected for this project. And, uh, with this project, our goal is, um, not only remove the asbestos hazard from the school, but also improve the thermal, uh, envelope of the building, provide a more energy efficient operation, and W T O means style, the security film, to raise the security, and, and at the same time, uh, replace existing doors that, uh, because of the age of the schools, there is an assumption that they might contain asbestos. And at this moment, I request the Board of Education to approve this agenda item as presented, and I am open for questions.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you for bringing this forward and, uh, for doing the exterior windows and the door replacement at, uh, the four schools, but in this particular case is for White Marsh Elementary School. Um, it's for energy efficiency and security, and we need those things for our school. And also, on another note, I want to thank you for the photos that you have been posting of the, uh, construction projects. Um, I especially like the drone image of Betty Marshall Dent Parking Lot, where we could see it from an aerial view, that was really good. Thank you for keeping us up to date on, on those, uh, projects and how they are progressing. And the drone shots are especially spectacular. So, do you know what kind of windows will be installed?
So, we will be working with the architect to determine what's the best option for us. Um, recently, um, we completed a design for the windows in Ridge Elementary, which is another of the four schools that was identified as, as required or recommended. And, um, we, we analyzed the needs, we analyzed the, the best functionality for the windows, and we determined that, you know, operable windows, double pane, um, was required to improve the thermal of the, and the security of the buildings. Um, so typically, in the last, uh, school's renovation that we've been doing, we've made them, um, with the option of operable, it, it, it provides more function to the, to the spaces and some constant ventilation that is very well needed in these days. So, we will be working with the architect to determine what's the best choice.
Okay, thank you.
Nagina?
I was going to ask about the material of the windows as well, because I know some of the windows in our schools have the ballistic laminate. Um, so would that be a possibility for these windows as well?
So, um, that is the main reason this project started to begin with, because we have been, safety and security have been installing this laminate in all the schools. And these particular schools, uh, because of the age and the conditions of the windows and the material, the laminate is not a possibility. As we complete this, uh, uh, project, safety and security will install that laminate as a, as a standard that they've been doing.
Mr. Davis?
Well, I would, I want to congratulate you for, um, making these alterations. As we all understand, uh, the heat, uh, heat transfer coefficients on a lot of these older buildings, uh, uh, tend to be very expensive. The only question I have is, uh, in the, uh, uh, in demolishing the old windows, do you have any allowance for mitigation of lead-based paint or any other hazardous material?
Yes, so in White Marsh, there was no lead-based paint detected, we already did the, the analysis with an industrial hygienist. In, uh, in, uh, the one that I'm presenting later, which is Town Creek, it, there were identified lead paint in the doors. Um, we will have to add contingency to the project when we, uh, when I come back here to award, to recommend for award for construction, um, in, in the group, um, like, um, I'm just posting one for the general contractor, R F P, for the installation of Ridge, which is ahead, and, and that's one of the recommendations that they're, they have to have a, a payment contractor under their umbrella.
Right. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Kathy?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
My only question is on the, um, on the doors, do you expect, I mean, are we just replacing the doors? Or do you see any, or envision, or does safety and security envision any changing, any change to the, like, the vestibule or, you know, the entrance way for security purposes?
So, I am also leading the projects for security vestibules, with, for safety and security. And, uh, we've completed all high schools and all middle schools, and we recently started with elementary schools. And we will be doing that too, it will not be part of this project, it will be a separate project. Just because of the complexity and, 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 and the function is different. Um, and I'm, I've been given a list of priorities depending on several factors, um, might be amount of students, or might be, um, the area where they are located, or, 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 or the need depending. Some of them, we are attaching it to projects that we are doing, like modernization in Mechanicsville. We're incorporating the security vestibule to that project, because it makes sense, it's a big project. But this one, it, it's separate.
Okay, so just, so just so I understand, so you're not expecting any changes to the entrance way or the outside door entrance area in, at White Marsh with this project?
No, no, because the entries in the schools most likely are storefront, and that is not the problem. The problem is in the metal insulated doors that are for firing exceed.
Gotcha, okay. All right, uh, if no one has anything else, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the award to Wheeler Goodman Maisick in the amount of sixty-eight thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars for professional architectural slash engineering consulting services for the replacement of exterior windows and doors at White Marsh Elementary School.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself, all right. Motion is carried, uh, our last action item of the day is, uh, Town Creek Elementary School. Looks like the same thing, exterior window and door replacement.
Same thing, uh, different contractor.
Yep, okay.
So, um, I'm here to request approval to award the contract in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty cents to Smolin E M R Ilkovich S E I Architects to provide professional architectural engineering consulting services for the replacement of the exterior doors and windows at Town Creek Elementary. Um, same, same situation, we went through the window study, and we determined this school needed, uh, this school has windows that were done, um, nineteen fifty-eight. Uh, and they are original, and they're in different stages of deterioration, so need to be replaced. And in this case, like I said, mentioned, mentioned before, there was found asbestos in the white exterior window placing compound in the exterior window cup, and it is assumed that inside all the exterior doors, um, metals, there's also asbestos. And in this school, uh, uh, lead, lead was, um, was detected on the exterior doors. Our recommendation is to replace the windows in totality and, uh, take advantage of the new systems of double pane and, and, um, insulated and sealed and with a low E comb. And, um, we selected, um, C E I for this project, uh, they are currently doing, um, modernization in, um, Lady Marshall Dent. Uh, it will be the second project we've worked with them. Again, they're part of our group that have been prequalified previously for projects under two million. And the construction estimate for this project is estimated in six hundred, six, fifty thousand dollars. And we follow the F E B policy of evaluating and qualifying them based on the technicality of their, of their experience and capabili- capabilities, capacities, and fees. And we, at this moment, I am, um, here to request the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented. And I'm open for more questions.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Nagina?
No questions, please.
Jim?
No questions, thank you.
I, I think we've gotten our money's worth out of, uh, sixty-two years of, of the, uh, window age, um, for Town Creek Elementary. Um, I, I know that, as you've pointed out, we have four schools who are going through this process. When do you anticipate, uh, once this work is done, when do you anticipate being able to award the contract and have the work done?
So, um, in this case, Town Creek and White Marsh, we plan to, if it's been awarded today, to start designing with the architect. And, uh, my hope is to have a product and a contractor awarded, so they can do this work during the summer. With Ridge, we have, have already a construction document set with another architect, uh, Ridge being smaller. Um, and, um, are, we are, uh, we prequalified contractors last month, and we are hoping to get the R F P this, next week, so we can award by December and start, um, ordering materials and also do the work during summer.
Well, it, it's wonderful, thank you very much for taking this on. I know to do these four projects is a, a very big deal, um, a great workload for you and your staff, um, but very much appreciated. And, uh, I know that we will achieve savings through the work that's being done, and in addition to making sure that our, our schools are more safe, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, may I have a motion?
I move that the.
I move that the Board of Education approve the award to Smolin E M R Ilkovich Architects in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty cents for professional architectural engineering consulting services for the replacement of the exterior windows and doors at Town Creek Elementary School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Myself is aye, all right, the motion is passed, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, and we have one informational item, Ms. Schrader. Which I believe Scott, you alluded to in your superintendent's report.
I did see Ms. Schrader log on, she should be on now.
I am here. Yeah, there we are, okay, great. Uh, good evening, everyone, uh, thanks so much for letting me bring you some information tonight on mental health and wellness. Uh, St. Mary's County Public Schools acknowledges that during this time of stress, there's a lot of stress and anxiety for our students, our families, and our staff. Our student services team is providing education and support to students, families, and staff in a variety of ways. In order to understand the critical need for supporting mental wellness, I wanted to take a little bit of time to talk about the data. Um, pre-COVID, about thirty-seven percent of high school students were experiencing periods of persistent depression or sadness or hopelessness during the previous year. The ten-year trend showed a little over ten percent increase in those feelings for the CDC Youth Risk Behavior Survey. In two thousand and nineteen, the same CDC Youth Risk Behavior Survey showed that about nine percent of high school students had attempted suicide one or more times in the previous year. That is about five percent increase in attempts, um, in, from the previous ten years of data. So we were alarmed at the data trend prior to COVID. Um, and once COVID hit, we are now seeing even more alarming trends and a huge increase across our county, our state, and across our country. Um, there was a large study that came out from the Mental Health America Report uh, that showed that during this time, since they have ever been looking and recording data and reported levels of suicide ideation, this is the highest levels ever recorded in their history of. So for a mental health person, that's quite alarming for me. It's also showing in our local data, we're showing trends of increased amounts of emergency petitions for our students and for adults in our community. Um, if you're not familiar with emergency petitions, emergency petitions are where law enforcement is called to assist a person who's experiencing a mental health crisis in an effort to get them to the local emergency department for evaluation and potential inpatient treatment. In the period of time from January until, uh, September, well, actually, end of October, the newest data, we had about ninety-five students under the age of eighteen E P to our local community hospital. We had thirteen petitions alone for the month of October. This is an extremely alarming number of students in crisis for me. In addition to our, yeah, thanks. In addition to the emergency petitions, we're also taking a look at our child protective services report. We know that our families are under a great amount of stress, um, due to loss of jobs, food, managing life and work balance. Uh, we're seeing an increase in number of reports to our social services department. That's not just local reports, but that's also local, state, and national reports. At the beginning of COVID, we actually saw a huge decrease in the number of reports to the Department of Social Services across the country. And part of that, uh, we feel, is probably due to the lack of in-person instruction and engagement with students in our schools. But what we did see in those numbers was an increase in severity of child abuse. And so, what that tells us is we, we weren't able to intervene early enough to give families the support and help that they need during times of stress. So, the last thing on this slide is talking about risk assessments versus emergency petitions in regards to data. Our school system employees, our counselors, our psychologists, our social workers, and sometimes our admin participate in a risk assessment for students who are potentially showing signs of depression and suicide in ten. Last school year, prior to COVID, we had well over three hundred and fifty risk assessments throughout all of our schools. This year, we have had ten. So we're doing less risk assessments than we were previously, probably because we're not in brick and mortar buildings at this time. We're seeing an increase in the emergency petitions. So, it's not because our students aren't struggling, they are struggling, and they're struggling to a severe degree. It's just that it's rising to the level that the police are being involved, and our students are being escorted to the emergency room for crisis intervention. So, this just tells me that we are all stressed, our students are stressed, our families are stressed, and it's being supported in the data. So, I wanted to take a look at and show, share with you what student services and what our school system is doing to help support our students. So, over the summer, we developed a plan to provide intervention at all levels in a tiered system of support for our students. So I'm gonna go into these a little bit, um, in detail, but an, an in-person route. But an in-person route, and we did a virtual route in order to plan for our students so that we could flow in and out of virtual and in-person instruction and provides a seamless line of services for our students regardless of what COVID has to throw at us with school instruction. You could go to the next slide, Dr. Smith? So Tier One is what all of our students are able to have access to. What are we doing for all students? All students can access social-emotional learning in the classroom, in-person, and through virtual instruction. All school counselors are providing counseling support and are able to provide counseling support to all students in every building, whether they are virtual or whether we are in-person environments. And we've also developed some new Google sites for all students to help promote mental health and wellness for elementary students and for our middle and high school students. And we're going to go into that in just a little bit and give you a sample of that. So the next slide focuses on Tier Two, which our school psychologists, our school counselors, our school social workers are providing that next level of intervention for our students that the Tier One just isn't quite enough for those students. So these are more focused groups. We're having lunch-munch groups with students virtually. We are doing skill-based groups to learn things like coping, anger management. And we're also providing some trauma groups. Our trauma groups are pretty specific and detailed and do require extra parent consent to ensure that they are able to participate in those groups. But we are trying to meet the needs of groups of students through this process in Tier Two. And that is happening virtual, and when we're in-person, those can happen in-person as well. For Tier Three, we have one-on-one counseling support for any student that needs that level of support. We have it available to them. All of our counselors, all of our school psychologists, and all of our school social workers have access to Zoom for Education, which is a HIPAA-compliant platform to provide telehealth counseling while we are in a virtual platform. They are also able to provide one-on-one services during in-person instruction. We are providing referrals to community-based supports. And what's not on here is our lab behavior specialists are also providing one-on-one counseling support to our special education and five of four students as well. So all students, no matter their level of need, we do have services available to them. In addition, this year, we created some mental health and wellness resources for different populations. We wanted sort of a one-place shop where people can go to get resources, to learn about mental health, and explore different emotions. So Dr. Smith, if you could click on the elementary student site for me, I'll give you a little taste of what that looks like. These sites are updated regularly. They're updated every month to add additional information depending on the topics for that month. Thank you. So this is the elementary student platform. So at the beginning, we placed like whatever's going on for November in the beginning. So this is World Kindness Month, then World Kindness Day happens in November. So there's a little video that's developmentally appropriate, and there's some wording. If you scroll down a little bit, we have a little bit video to teach kids about mental health. What is it? You just keep scrolling through and you just get a little idea. In this one, we have a whole feelings exploration Bitmoji room. So you can click on with your student. Some of our counselors and social workers are actually looking and using this Bitmoji room as a way to help teach emotions, help teach social-emotional regulation, understand what they're feeling. There's video links, and in the little cabinet there, you can explore the different emotions of like sadness, anxiety, anger. All of the little items in those rooms are either videos, read aloud books that you can read with your child or read with your students, and learn about the different emotions that we have as an elementary-aged child. If you scroll down, going through the emotions, we just, we learn a little bit about when our feelings are harder to control. And then right below that, we will change this every so often, is giving students a technique to use for when they're feeling a certain emotion. So developmentally appropriate for belly breathing, there's a little video that helps with that. And then if you need a little sense of calm, there's a calming room that you can go to the beach. You can listen to calming music, whatever it is to help you calm yourself. There's even like walk with. So there's just different things that we're adding to these Google sites for kids. And this one is for elementary. Go back to the main board.
All right, hold on.
He doesn't know how to do that.
Well, you got me toggling between different windows.
I know!
So you want me to go to secondary? I can go to the secondary. There you go. All right. There we go.
I mean, I won't have to do as much explaining on this one. Because the topics are similar, the content is similar. Some of the items are exactly the same, but then some of them are different based on developmental age. So we just added a different video there, there, that. There's another feelings room. It's similar, but the content is developmentally appropriate for teenagers in that one. And you can keep scrolling all the way down, Dr. Smith.
While he's scrolling, can I ask a question?
You can see that there's a lot of different things available. They also have a calming room. In this one, we also created a little movie room to help educate about specific mental health disorders. Because in middle and high school, kids are curious if they've been diagnosed with depression or anxiety or autism or ADHD. And those are some neat little educational videos for them, helping to understand emotion. And then we provide a list of resources for our teenagers that they can access directly for those. And again, some of the information stays the same, and some of the information changes month to month.
Can I ask a question on that? So on the school safety subcabinet or whatever they, whatever I serve on, I think it's a subcabinet, they, there's a lot of mental health coordinators from different places within the state. And the one woman who's on there continually talks about what the stigma is of the actual words "mental health" and what they have on children. So I guess, I understand, and I haven't looked at the video for the elementary school kids, but if, but I've been in some of the Google meets as I'm walking by my son's room where the counselors are talking to the students. But, and I don't want to minimize it, but do, are you seeing that maybe the students aren't using it because we are using the word "mental health", and there's that negative connotation that's automatically associated with it? Like, do you understand what I'm saying?
What do you mean by not using it?
Well, I mean, like, if I'm in a room with a bunch of seventh graders, right? And I have a counselor who's talking to them. I have some people that are taking it probably very seriously and some people who are acting like typical 12- and 13-year-old kids and, you know, making a joke about it. So if I'm a student who actually needs help or feels that I need help, then what do I do to not break out or not? I might not be willing to share with someone. And keep in mind, not everyone has their cameras on either. So a lot of it is being transmitted through a group, you know, through the group chat and things like that. So how does the counselor or the teacher reach out to that student that does need help because everyone's making, oh, it's the mental health lady, or, you know, you know, this is a big joke? So how do you reach the kids who need help and are trying to take it seriously, but you, but they are one of 25 who are joking about it? Does that make sense?
So, yeah, totally makes complete sense. So in one of my future slides, if you don't mind if I can come back to that-
That's fine.
-that may address the question.
Right, I saw the mental health, you know, label on there, you know, and title. And I just wanted to see, you know, if any of the students were not using or accessing the resources because they had that negative connotation from a group breakout or from a classroom setting where a counselor was in there talking about mental health and everyone was joking about it.
Yeah, so, so we're always going to have that. No matter, no matter how you... We have multiple layers of intervention and ways to reach students.
Okay, okay.
So, so I would say to you that, that yes, we recognize that that does happen in a group setting and that that isn't always the best setting for every student. So we have different ways to capture those kids and recognize those students who may need additional support that maybe they're not willing to turn their cameras on or maybe they're not willing to ask questions in those group presentations. We have some one-on-one services. We have small groups. And then we have, you know, the larger groups, which it sounds like what you're referring to when like the counselor maybe comes into a room and has a discussion with a whole class.
Right.
And we are exploring some other ways to reach students because we know when it comes to some of our more serious mental health issues, I can sit up here and talk all day, but, but the reality is students aren't going to listen to me as much as they listen to their peers.
Gotcha, okay.
So we are exploring some additional ways to intervene earlier with students and exploring some programming and things that we hope to provide in the future as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I am gonna, we do have some ways to recognize, and I will talk about that in just, just a couple minutes. And we don't have to go into the other sites. I encourage you to do that on your own. But we did create a staff site and a site for parents and guardians as well and provided some additional information to those two groups about their own mental health as well as the mental health and wellness of their students or their children. So there's a lot of good information there to take a look at. We wanted to talk a little bit more in-depth about what our suicide prevention resources are currently. I wanted to let you know that all of our secondary counselors are providing classroom guidance around suicide prevention. So all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are getting face-to-face contact, whether that's virtual, face-to-face, or that's the physical when we are in a brick-and-mortar building. We're providing education around what does that look like? What does it sound like? How do you know? And how to get support for our students. And that is also being taught in the high school levels as well. I created, with support of student services team and leadership team, we created a document. You want to click on that underlined document, Dr. Smith? This will help answer the question that you had asked before. In this new world of virtual teaching, we felt it was important to give teachers and arm them with information on how to recognize when a student might need that additional support. So we created this document on how to recognize student mental health concerns in the live and in the virtual classroom. And it's just some tips for teachers to help. They know their students. Teachers see their students. They see their behaviors, whether they can physically see them or whether it's through a screen or just through their work production. They begin to get to know their students at the start of every year. And so we created this document as sort of a guide to help teachers recognize and get support for those students. So we have a tiered system of support for teachers as well. So teachers have a plan to reach out to students individually, to reach out to their families if they notice something. There is a referral system to the school-based teams and base where our middle and high school and elementary counselors, our psychologists, and our school social workers can get a referral from a teacher and then reach out to that child or that, that high schooler for additional support. And then we have a referral to that one-on-one, more intensive support that happens. So it is definitely available. I think we need to make sure that, that teachers and parents understand that those services are available as well as our students so that they can self-refer. We get a lot more self-referrals for help in a brick-and-mortar building because they're there. They know to just walk down to the counseling office when they're having a problem. So it does take a little bit more effort during this virtual way. So we have that document to help. We do still conduct risk assessments if students are in a counseling session and it appears that they need an additional layer of support. We do assess to see for safety. We also have partnered with our community partners to bring awareness campaigns such as "Are You Okay?" and things like that. We are also continuing to have conversations with community partners about getting the word out about different mental health conditions and how to seek support because we know that it's not just kids. It's also our parents, our staff, our community. So we're working together to promote some positive mental health as well. And then the Google sites, we also have resources located at the bottom of every one of those sites. I also wanted to take just a minute to talk about our STOP grant folks. As you know, we, we applied for and won a partnership grant with the Health Department to bring clinical mental health services to our school system. And we now have a social work team. All eight social workers have been hired and have been in place. They were onboarded last school year throughout the year. This team, there's basically three paths to a student receiving services. One is anyone can refer a student who might need that mental health support. And that is like our 12-week program. There's a, they go through, they, they meet with the student, they talk to the parent, they do an intake, and they develop goals for that student based on their individual needs. We have an after-care program for students returning from ED admissions and from hospitalizations for mental health where they are offered one-on-one counseling services through the social worker at the secondary level and also a case management piece to help hook them up with community providers and bridge that gap between hospitalization and community-based support. And the third is a walk-in crisis intervention model that they, they support as well. So any student who is in crisis or needs support, they can provide that, that service to that student. Some of our data, last year, even though we were not fully onboarded at the start of the year, our last person was hired approximately four weeks before COVID in March. They saw 561 students. That is a huge number of students that they serviced. 235 of those students completed the full 12-week counseling intervention program with pre- and post-testing to support their progress. And they saw 49 after-care students. So 49 students returning from hospitalization they were able to meet with and support as well. Our first quarter data this year, we are rocking and rolling even though we are already just one quarter in. So this year, when COVID hit, we had to transition from in-person instruction to a whole new way of meeting with students, much like our community providers. So all of our social workers actually in the spring continued to meet with students virtually through, through a telecounseling platform. So services did not stop for those students. And that actually prepared us for the start of this school year, giving us the ability to seamlessly pick up those students and continue. So so far this year, for the first quarter, that didn't start till the end of August, they've already seen 84 students and have 50 students actively in the 12-week program. But we are seeing kids. We are, we still have room for kids. So if there are students that, that need that level of support, we are able to support them at this time. I think that is really all that I really wanted to talk to you about, is just giving you an idea of all of the services that we have put into place for this school year and that we have available to our students. I'm open for questions if you have any about anything.
Mary, do you have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. You covered a lot of ground, and you are very busy. I can tell that. And I can tell that you care about the students and provide services for the students. Can you give me examples of school title education that parents and we should be aware of?
Sure. You all look for changes in your students. You know, every student has a diff, every person has a baseline of how they function. So you want to look at, you know, were they previously super-social and, you know, texting their friends all the time and now they're not? Do they, are they disengaging from activities that they used to do that they no longer do? They just don't enjoy? Another big one is you might feel a sense of hopelessness. They might say things like, I can't get out of this hole. I'm not good enough. I, I don't know why, I don't know why I feel this way. I just feel off. They may not come right out and use the words about suicide. So it's just really paying attention to your own student. It can look like adult depression. You might see crying, you might see difficulty walking out of bed, withdrawing from things. But you also might see anger, mood fluctuations that are not typical for your student. A lot of our students will say things off the cuff and, you know, like I don't want to be here anymore. And I think sometimes it's easy to say that those things are just language that a person uses when they're frustrated. And it could be. But it's always a marker to ask the questions. Don't be afraid to ask the questions of your students. How are you? How are you feeling? How are you managing this stress? Are you feeling sad? Tell me about that. Ask the questions.
And what is the, and what is the first thing a teacher should do if she notices a suicidal admission?
Well, if they have something specific and they, they highly suspect that, that a student is suicidal, they should contact the school counselor, school social worker in their building to follow up with that student. If it's an emergency, they need to kind of contact nine-one-one. We actually did create a, a safety protocol list for teachers to follow should they suspect that a student is at risk harm to themselves or others so that they have access to that on step-by-step what to do if they notice something with the student. We have teachers that reach out to students, we have teachers that reach out to families. We have counselors and social workers and our psychologists meet with students. And then we do refer people to the hospital if that's necessary. Every single time we make contact with a parent, we suggest, if we suspect, every single time.
So they get that contact immediately, is that correct?
Yes, yes. If you suspect that student is suicidal, the, the con, it depends on if you're interacting with the student in a counseling session. They may do a risk assessment first and then contact, but yes, yes.
Now, now what is involved in a risk assessment? What kind of questions are asked and what does that look like? I know I'm, I'm sure it's age-appropriate, you know, things, but what is, what depends if a student is at risk through that risk assessment?
So a student would, a, a risk assessment is initiated when there is a suspicion or evidence or a writing or a statement that a student may be suicidal. In our county, we have a protocol where there are two assessors required in order to do a risk assessment with a student. So there's, there's two adults that work with the student to better gauge and, and interact with the student to complete that assessment. We get background information, we ask family history. There, there's also a little check section to review things like, you know, what does their social situation look like? Are they withdrawing? Do they have any medical conditions? Do they have any mental health conditions? Are they in treatment? We ask all of those questions. We look for protective factors for kids. Are they connected to at least one adult? That is huge. And we, we weigh that with risk assess, I mean with, with risk factors. So it's protective factors and risk factors. And, and we ask the questions, you know? If they have talked about it specifically, then we ask them to describe that for us. You know, do they have a plan? What does that look like? What does it sound like? What does it feel like? We do safety planning if that is necessary. And there is a, a method that helps them determine that level of risk. So it could be low risk, it could be moderate risk, it could be high risk. If a student pops up as a high-risk student, then the recommendation is going to be that we, we, we request that parent to take them for further evaluation for possible inpatient treatment. And so regardless of the risk, we always inform the parent of, of the content and provide resources to the parent because a risk assessment is only one moment in time. And that moment can change. So right now, I could be low risk. In an hour from now, I could be high risk. And so we provide that information on where to go for help. There are texting hotlines, there are phone numbers, there are local ERs. We provide local information as well as statewide information to parents so that they can get the support that they're seeking.
And I want to thank you for a lot of information that is posted online by school psychologists about mental health issues, support and guidance that you provide. And it's very good and a lot of times it leads you to an article that you can read. So I really appreciate all that you're doing to educate students and citizens about mental health issues. Mental health issues have been something that's been in the dark. People don't want to talk about it and they still don't want to talk about it. They'd rather talk about another illness or disease that they might have and they will get empathy. But people sometime are afraid to talk about mental health issues and we haven't come out fully that people feel comfortable talking about it because mental health is part of your overall health.
They all have it.
And it's, are things posted around the schools? Like on the wall saying, look, if you have a problem, talk to somebody or if, if you feel like this, you need to get help mentally. So I can go in any school, elementary, middle or high, when that time comes, when I can go back in the schools. And I will see things posted all around about mental health for our students. Because somebody may be feeling a certain way and they look up and they see something on the wall that said, you're not alone. Help is available. If you're feeling that way, then go talk to somebody now. I would find any of our schools.
You, you should be able to find it. Every school that I've, I've been in since I've been employed here has that information. And, and we do update those posters and, and we like to give up-to-date, accurate information. I know last year we, we put out a bunch of the are you okay? We partnered with the health department and they printed a ton of those posters for us. And then there's some other posters, you'll see them in the counseling office, you'll see them in, in some hallways of buildings. But you'll see them in the main office, it just depends on the location. But, but yes, it's out there.
And I thank you very much and the whole department for what you're doing. I remember when we didn't have a nurse in every school. Now we have a nurse in every school. And I, way back then, I was thinking we need a social worker and a psychologist in every school. And I know back then they would have thought she must be out of her mind. But that was twenty-four years ago because it is vitally important to have good mental health in order to be able to be a highly functioning student and citizen. So the work you're doing is very important. I used to work in the social work area and I know how vitally important it is for students and teachers and everybody overall. So thank you for the presentation. You had a small amount of time to cover many things and you did a great job doing it. Thank you.
Nagina?
I just wanted to say I really like those sites and I think that they're amazing resources for students and even parents. But I do think that students and parents would be more inclined to use those sites if they were more accessible. So would it be possible to maybe upload the links on the SMCPS student information tab on Schoology since parents and students both have a view of that?
So we can look at the student information tab. We have added them to a couple of places. They are actually linked into the student dashboard in Schoology. There, there is the mental health and wellness tab. If you click that, that takes you right to, to the websites. We have also linked them on the main SMCPS website. If you go to that mental health resources tab on the main site or any school tab, that takes you to a loaded page where the links are right there for everybody. I agree that we need to get the word out about the location of the sites and we are working hard to get that out. And it's one reason why they're in my presentation tonight.
Hey, hey, Nagina, that would be a really good one for be your best self. We're gonna maybe get the Slack kids to do a video on that. That'd be, we'll get, we'll be working on that tomorrow.
That would be great.
Yep.
And also like, um, once like we are back in schools and whatever posters or anything like that, if there was like a QR code so that students can just take their phones and scan it, that would be really great.
Yeah, I actually think there is a QR code on the most recent, recent ones. So yes, we know that that technology piece is key for students. One of the things you, you hear a lot about phone hotlines for if you're feeling sad or you're feeling depressed. And what we know is students don't do that. They're not going to call someone, but they're going to text someone. And so that seven-four-one, seven-four-one texting line, twenty-four-seven, and students will use it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Just one real quick question. Virtual learning is, is a, a new phenomenon, at least for me. And I was curious, a lot of depression with the kids is focused on bullying. So if we're doing virtual learning, are you seeing any bullying online or is it, is it diminished somewhat? Or are they using, you know, net, the networking or the internet to do it instead of in person?
Yeah, so pre, questions. Pre-COVID, we actually had seen a shift in the way bullying was happening. So we know bullying has been, has been there. We actually saw a decrease in the amount of bullying reports over the last two years for physical, in-person kind of bullying. And it has shifted as technology has increased and more online social media sites and platforms for students. It's shifted over to out of school, on the internet. And so it's a little bit harder to track. So the, the, the overall bullying reports has actually gone down significantly. That's being reported, again, key words being reported. The other thing that's, but we actually ask those questions when we're doing our risk assessments. And so we do check that to see if that is a part of what's going on for that specific student because things don't stop with the assessment. We then take that student's situation and we plan to help alleviate the symptoms that they're having. We want to put things into place. If they're reporting bullying, what can we do to help with that? So we have not seen very many reports. I actually don't think I've seen any reports this school year as far as an official bullying report.
That's good to hear. Thank you very much.
Kathy, do you have anything?
I don't have anything. Thank you very much.
Yes, I, I asked my questions during the presentation, so thank you. That cleared it up a lot and I do like the teacher document. I think that's a good, it's a good tool, so. Okay, anyone have anything else?
No.
Okay, with that, the next board meeting, it's actually a special board meeting, will be on December second. We are going to begin working on the budget. We will have a presentation about our twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Yes, and before that, we have our joint session with the county commissioners on Tuesday, the first of December.
So, and that will of course be virtual as far as we know, so. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.